I can get the outside where it's in good shape. Yeah. You know, as far as eyesore or something like that there. I do got medical condition, but I will try to get some people to help me.
Is it possible, all I ask is to inspect?
Yes, sir.
Is it possible to rehabilitate that house?
It is.
Yes, sir.
I mean, like I said before, any structures can be rehabilitated. It's got some structural problems, but...
That was a Jim Water home to start with, and I had a house that moved over there, built in 1925, and backed up to it. And I put two houses together and built it like it was. At one time, I had it looking good enough that Ford Properties wanted to put it in showcase for realtors. I used to paint for them. But I fell off a roof, and I haven't been able to work.
Well, if you think you can get it cleaned up in thirty days, we're gonna give you thirty days to get it cleaned up.
Yes, sir.
And now, if it doesn't, we're gonna demolish it, and then it's gonna be a lien put on the property, and you'll have to pay. You won't have the house anymore.
Yes, sir.
You understand that?
I already went through it. I had one next door when I fell off of the roof, and they did that to that one because I couldn't get the wiring brought up to date. So I do understand what you're saying.
Sir, the first thing you need to do is secure it. And don't let anybody loiter around there. I don't want that to be a nuisance for our Sheriff's Department to have to clean up
Yes, sir.
day after day.
Well, the whole area there is something that my father had put most of the houses there. We all had houses moved over there and put together, the whole little place back there behind the post office.
But you must secure the property, and, you know, if you intend to live there, then you've got thirty days to show us some progress on that.
So it's been a family home. I would like to try to keep it in the family and hand it down to my son, my oldest son.
I got a question.
Lancaster.
What if during that period of thirty days, the Sheriff's Department back out there and they make some arrests off that property?
There's no one living there or anything, sir. I mean, I got arrested for going over there myself twice. First night I got out of jail, I went in there to get clothes, but I lost my keys. I got arrested that night. The next time, I thought somebody was over in my house, and I parked on a lot next door, and I got arrested again. But I wasn't on that property, but I couldn't convince them that it wasn't two lots, you know, that they were separate lots.
Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for the officer. Help me to understand, where is Charles Street?
Charles Street. And I know, Mr. Evans, you've been here long, and all of y'all have too, so I'm giving you a visual side of it, okay? Mount Rose Motel, McKenna Street, that dirt road going alongside McKenna Street, in between what used to be the mobile home place you sell Carolina mobile homes and all that there. You go down that dirt road, you take a left on Cooper. You take a left on Cooper Street. Not Cooper Street, I'm sorry. Moody Street. Take a left on Moody Street, go all the way down to the stop sign, take a right, and you'll be coming in behind the post office on Old Drive. Or the parts houses or Glenn's Truck Stop and all that there. It falls right in that area, right in there. It's back there, it's kind of like an isolated area. And that's where it's at, and if you don't quite got a picture, I'll even try to help you a little bit more on it.
Okay.
We're glad to.
And thank you for that. I have an idea where you're at now.
For your prostitutes and stuff, I had never known until I let this one guy move in with me.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'll speak with the Sheriff's Deputy right quick. Sir, let me ask you, in that particular area, is it a haven for prostitution and drugs? Is it an area that you've been trying to clean up for a long period of time?
Yes, sir.
Because I know Mount Rose is a place where, well, I shouldn't say that, but...
Yes, sir. We've been working it for a while, yes, sir. And that general area is known for it, because even over there, and it's just right around the corner from El Rancho, which, you know, it's burnt down. The girls even had a place in the bamboo shoots where they had condoms on a thing, and chairs and black, and they were doing curbside service there. And we brought them there, and I had to haul all that stuff to the landfill.
Okay.
To get rid of it. We've been, and at one time, the girls were getting so bold not far from that house, they even jumped into a van trying to solicit business when their business got down. It's not hard to see them when, you know, we've been running little prostitution rings and everything else, and it's a slow progress, but we are making progress.
And one more quick question. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just one more quick question. The businesses and individuals that stay around that particular area?
Yes, sir.
Have you received a number of complaints from them about the illicit activity going on and all kinds of issues that's dealing with the prostitution and the drugs and all of this?
Yes, sir. We sure have. We've also, and I wouldn't want to sit here and name the individuals, but...
No, I wouldn't want you to.
But you even have some of the, that house's backyard butts up to some big businesses that we got here in Cumberland County. When I say big, like record services and water services and so on, storage buildings and stuff, and we've even heard complaints out of them.
Okay, okay.
And I would dare to say this to help you out a little bit, you know, any time y'all, you could, it's not as bad as it was, but certain times of the evening, say around 4:30 and between 4:30 and 7:00, if you used to go around that area, you could see some of our girls in around 7:30 and 8 o'clock in the morning. And it's, we have, and I know it sounds a little bit, but see, you gotta catch them doing the, they gotta ask for the services and all that, you know? There's certain things that the law has in place that we got to have in place in order to win it in court.
Okay, thank you, sir. Now, Mr. Chairman, just one more question, please. A young man that owns the building. And I'm not trying to get into your business, but this will help me, and I'm sure it'll help others as well. Will you say that you have, that you've been running into problems? What type of problems have you been running into?
My health.
Okay, okay.
I've got a hernia right now, so I tried to get it removed, but I didn't have...
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, okay.
Yeah, I did go to emergency room to try to get that out, but I am just a officer. I've got pins in my knees and my ankles and two hip replacements.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I've got two grown boys and, you know, and stuff, some people that volunteered to try to help get the yard cleaned up.
I understand. Thank you.
Or like he said, with that activity, there's a path over there beside that storage company that they cut through to go to that motel's over on 95 over there, off the West Mountain. Like I said, they use it for, I'd like to go through to the store.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the order of the minimum housing inspector as the true facts in his case, and to order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within thirty days. To order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling, if the owner fails to do so, and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action, and to direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same in the register of deeds.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Let me understand, what are you, are you not, are you giving them thirty days?
Giving them thirty days.
To knock it down?
Giving thirty days to clean it up, or they're, we're gonna knock it down.
Is that what the motion says? Okay.
Well, I withdraw by a second.
Read the motion again. I didn't hear, I didn't hear you give them thirty days.
I move that we adopt the order and report of the minimum housing inspector as the true facts in his case, and order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within thirty days. To order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling, if the owner fails to do so, and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action, and to direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same in the register of deeds.
Okay, I'll second it. I'm sorry you have my hearing aid on. I'm sorry. I second it.
Okay, all right. It's moved and seconded. All right, is there discussion?
Call for the end of discussion.
Okay, all in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Edge, Adams, Council, and Evans. Voting in opposition, Chairman Faircloth, and Commissioner Lancaster.
Okay, next to Adam.
Yes, sir. Our next public hearing is on the proposed 2017 schedules, standards, and rules for the 2017 property tax revaluation. I ask our tax administrator, Mr. Utley, to come forth, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners.
Good evening.
The Schedule of Values was presented to the Board of Commissioners and made available to the public on November 7th at the Commissioners' Meeting. On Tuesday, November the 8th, an ad was placed in the Fable Observer providing notification that the Schedule of Values was available for public inspection in the Tax Administrator's Office. In the same ad, notification made, known that a public hearing concerning the Schedule of Values would be held at the regularly scheduled Commissioners' Meeting on November the 21st, 2016. And that's what we're here for tonight, is the public hearing.
Okay, this time I'll open the public hearing. Are there any speakers on this?
There are no speakers.
No speakers, okay. All right, I'll ask the board, we just take that under advisement? Remember, you actually want that, right?
Yes, sir. The, we have to wait thirty days before the board can actually approve the Schedule of Values, so we'll bring that back at our December 19th meeting.
Okay. All right, close the public hearing?
Our next public hearing is on the approval of submission of, is a public hearing and an approval of submission of the 2018 North Carolina Department of Transportation grant application for the Community Transportation Program. I ask Mr. Strickland to come forward and give us some background information, please, before the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon and Commissioners. This is our yearly administrative grant for the Community Transportation Program. We renew it every year, and DOT is getting more and more aggressive with renewing it early. So we're actually approving fiscal year 2018 at this point. So this will be, right now, we're looking at the same amount of funding as last year, which was $132,078, which means the county's local match for that would be $19,812. That's no change. At the moment, there is some talk the DOT may actually add some additional funds to the program, depending upon how expenditures go this year. But at this point, the number we're bringing to you is the 132,078, and the local match would be $19,812. Just to refresh you a little bit on this, again, that was the total that we had this fiscal year as well. Previous to that, our total was around $60,000. And the county had to come up with whatever additional funding was needed for salaries or for office supplies or computer hardware, or whatever was needed for the program. So the increase from NC DOT has been extremely valuable for the program and for the county. So again, we're just asking for approval to submit the application for the $132,078, with the county's share of that being $19,812. And if we do get a new number from NC DOT in the future, we'll bring that back to you.
Any questions this time?
First, we need to open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing. Any speakers?
There are no speakers.
No speakers this time. Counsel?
I move that we approve the submission of the fiscal year 2018 Community Transportation Program Grant Application to the North Carolina Department of Transportation. I hope they give us a little bit more money. The November... That's my motion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Our first item of business is consideration of a request from Graves Creek Properties, LLC for removal of graves to a private cemetery pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 65-106. And I'd ask the county attorney, Mr. Moorfield, to give us some background information on this, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Local attorney Charles Gardner came to the county with this. It's a statute that authorizes a lot of entities, including private individuals, in this case, a private company, a limited liability company, to remove private cemeteries or burials from private property to an appropriate cemetery. Mr. Gardner, and I've attached all that information in the package, I believe that he fully complied with the statutory requirements in exercising due diligence by hiring a professional genealogist to see if she could determine who the potential next of kin to one of the persons who was buried there in 1887, and that she did identify fifteen persons who would possibly be next of kin to that decedent in Cumberland or Robinson County, I think there's some of them out state. But they have given notice by certified mail to all of those persons. I've attached the order confirmation with the Fable Observer, in which he advertised the company's intent to do this process. It's approved by the Board of Commissioners. There are three graves there. One of the unusual aspects of this is that after the person was buried in 1887, the next person was the mother of some of the heirs that are involved in this, who was buried in 1999. When their father died in 2007, they had already sold this property to this LLC, and they approached the new owner and asked if their father could be buried there. They actually wrote up a contract in which the heirs agreed that if they would allow their father to be buried there beside their mother, in the future, if the company had a need to move those graves, they would consent to it, and so that's a copy of that's in there also. So we're talking about three graves. The, Mr. Gardner reports that the company has located a private cemetery to move these graves to. I've spoken with the health director, and the health director has agreed that either he or he'll designate someone from the health department to direct and supervise this process. And that's another statutory requirement. If the board sees fit to approve this request, I recommend it, and if prepared, just if the board can approve this request of the property or subject to the property or coordinating with the health director, or is designated to direct and supervise the process, complying with the requirements of the statute for filing a written certificate with the register of deeds, removing, replacing, or protecting and replacing all the tombstones or markers, and being responsible for all costs associated with this process.
Okay, board, any questions for the, not, Mr. Counsel?
That's my motion, as the attorney just stated.
I second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion at this time? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Item six?
Item number six is consideration of disaster debris removal and monitoring service contracts, and our assistant county manager, Mr. Jackson, is going to present this item. As he makes his way to the podium, I believe the clerk placed a revised item number six, a paper copy, at your seat.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Before I start, if I may, I'd like to introduce somebody to you. We have our new disaster recovery consultant from IEM with us tonight, and her name is Teresa Carter. She's here in the audience with us, so I just want to introduce you to her. And I'll start by saying that we have received a number of proposals for debris management and removal, and our review panel consisted of myself, Randy Beaman, our Director of Emergency Services, Jeffrey Brown, our Director of Engineering and Infrastructure, and Jean Booth, our Emergency Management Coordinator. We reviewed these proposals. And there, as Ms. Cannon said, you have this new and most recent memo, and I'll go through that with you right now, and explain where we're at with the proposals and our recommendations. As you know, due to the flooding associated with Hurricane Matthew and the catastrophic damage that resulted, our county was left with lessening two separate requests for proposals for debris management. And the first one, number 1712 ES, was for management and monitoring. The second, number 17-13-ES, was for clearance and removal. In order to be eligible for federal disaster reimbursement and to assure that adequate project oversight and accountability occurs, the county had to seek separate contractors in each of those categories. We received responses to each of the RFP. We actually had eight different companies, that's four per category, that responded, and the results of the process are shown there below. In terms of the disaster debris management and recovery companies, landfall strategies came in with the highest score. In terms of the evaluation criteria that we use there, we look for companies that had substantial experience, not just in one state, but multiple states, with multiple disasters, large-scale disasters. So we did not want any fly-by-night companies. We were strictly looking for the most experienced and the most professional companies that we could in order to perform this work. So we looked at their monitoring experience, their emergency management experience, actually dealing with the folks at FEMA and the state emergency management, their staff's experience, their background, where they had worked previously, what they brought to the table, the planning timetable, how quickly they can respond and be on scene in our county to help us with the assessment and planning process, their training program, which is very important and mandated by various state and federal requirements, and of course, the reasonableness of their fees. The second, RFP for debris clearance and removal, Series Environmental came in. It's a top-scoring company. And the criteria that we use there, again, somewhat similar, but a little bit different because this company deals with the hands-on labor, the actual pickup of the debris out in the field, where the first company is monitoring what the debris removal company is doing, just to make sure that we're keeping them honest. We looked at strictly their qualifications, how long they've been doing it, how much they've done across the country, their technical experience, their financial strength, how quickly they can get here on scene, and also their schedule of fees for performing the services. Now, Ms. Carter, that you were introduced to just a few minutes ago, she arrived on scene to help us November the 15th, and under her advice, we also sought some additional information from the companies that were the top-scoring in the RFP process. And we also looked at the active number of projects that they're dealing with across the states, because there were multiple states involved, of course, with this disaster. And also, their tonnage costs for picking up debris, because originally, we had thought there'd be a lot of vegetative debris. What we found, at least staff has found in the assessment, is that most of what's out there is construction and demolition-related debris, very little vegetative, which means we're dealing mainly with tonnage rates and not cubic yard-type measurements, which would be more often applied to vegetative debris. So we sought a budget revision in the amount of $600,000, and that has been created, and in order to enter into some contracts for this service, there's a not-to-exceed amount of $300 per contract, so two separate contracts, again, one for monitoring, one for the actual debris pickup. All the hurricane-related work is to be completed no later than January 7th of 2017, unless extended by the Board of Commissioners. We feel like that's a very reasonable timeframe, and we're very hopeful that it can be done in a shorter amount of time.
Tracy, can I make one clarification? The contracts are $300,000 each.
Right, right. A total of $600,000, but two separate contracts, $300,000 apiece. At this point, our recommendation, staff recommends the Board of Commissioners approve the attached resolution authorizing the county manager to enter into contracts for debris management and recovery and debris clearance and removal, plus approve the budget revision B170578 for $600,000 to cover the cost of the forthcoming contracts with landfall strategies and Series Environmental. And we'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have at this point.
Mr. Adams?
I do have a question, and I guess, make sure I understand this. There are two contracts?
Two separate contracts.
One is to pick up the debris, the hands-on pick it up?
Yes, sir.
And the other one is to monitor the one that's picking up?
You have to have somebody to watch the one that's picking up, yes, sir.
I got that. So I'm gonna pay somebody $300,000, even though I got somebody whose hand picking up, I'm paying them the exact same amount. It doesn't seem to me that I should have to pay somebody the same amount to monitor somebody who's actually doing the legwork. If I, I just don't understand...
I understand what you're saying.
The value doesn't, the values don't come out to me, is that if I'm gonna ride around in the truck to make sure you're picking it up, and I don't know what all they're doing, I'm gonna pay you the same amount as the man who's out there picking it up and disposing it. So is the first contract, it just seems a little bit high to me, $300,000?
Right, and I can explain that.
Okay.
Yes. So it's an up-to amount, not-to-exceed amount.
I got that.
So we don't anticipate it's gonna go above that amount. Now, the monitoring company has different rates and different fees than the pickup company.
Should be lower.
Well, and they have their own experts and their own people, so there's a schedule of people with different titles and different jobs, different functions. And a lot of these functions are FEMA-mandated, okay? So there is a requirement that there be a separate company that do the monitoring.
I got that part.
Okay? And their rates are what they are, and we've looked at those across the board, compared those to the other companies. Now, it's not just based on a low bid, it's based on all the other qualifications in our procurement process, too. So we're able to pick the most qualified person and...
What's the ranges then, I guess, for the, for the, for the, for the first one that does the monitoring? What kind of range do we have? If you, if you don't have it, I understand, but I mean...
Well, I have, I have it.
Okay.
But it's...
And I know, when you looked at them, you took in the tonnage where they were working and all of that, but I'd like to see the range from whatever up to $300,000.
Right.
Because I just think that that...
And we can get you that information. We're in the process of trying to work out contracts and finalize some details, so that's something that we can do in terms of getting you some more information. I can say that in terms of explaining the cost, for example, for the debris management and recovery, four different vendors, Landfall Strategies, Tetris...
This is the first one?
Right, this is the first one, Landfall Strategies. For example, there are a number of different positions listed in their RFP that perform different functions in terms of the monitoring. So there's a project manager. The project manager's cost per hour, $62 an hour. The next vendor was $72 an hour. O'Brien's was $68 an hour. Metric was 90. So in terms of the cost, and it falls out from there, I mean, and it varies by title, by function. If you look at the hourly cost for all the different positions and come down to a total, or, you know, at least a column total, they still were number one in terms of the cost, but there's lots of other functions that we're looking at, and lots of other performance issues and qualifications that we're looking at. So it's, again, not just based on price. We want somebody that's reputable. We want somebody that's gonna get in there and do the job right, make sure that the, and this is a very important part, make sure that the debris removal is done correctly. And this all comes back to the county getting its reimbursement from the state and federal government at the end of the day, and making sure that the debris is removed and handled appropriately.
As to my second...
I was gonna make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman. I was wondering if maybe our FEMA consultant, who has a significant background and expertise in debris management, may be able to tell us if that normally the monitoring contract, if these rates are in line with other monitoring contracts that she's had experience with?
I don't, I just want, I just had that question, just because, and it's up to $300,000, so I trust staff to be able to do the contract. I just want to know the difference as to why one was three, and both of them were three, and one seemed to be doing a little bit more work. But I trust staff, because it's up to $300,000, so I just wanted to make sure in terms of what we were looking at, and he gave me that. I guess my second question is, when they do the removal, where are they gonna dispose of the debris?
It goes to our landfill. It goes to the Cumberland County landfill.
Right. So is there, do we charge them, or is that, are they charging us in the contract? Where does that work out?
They charge us, but it's figured into the cost, and that's on a different...
Right. So when they take it to the landfill, we charge them?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. There's no waiver of fee on that.
Anybody else have a question? The only question I have, basically, is, and I think you answered it, but FEMA will be looking over our shoulder on this contract, and everything will be in line with everything so that we can get...
That's where I feel fortunate to have Mrs. Carter's expertise. We also have staff in-house that are handling... We also have staff in-house that are handling the documentation, and they'll be working closely with the contractors to make sure that everything is done by FEMA standards. And then, they in turn will also be working with the state and federal...